Welcome to the February 11th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Vice Mayor Doug Young has our prayer and our pledge.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's a special night. And we get to honor someone who's served the city of Murfreesboro for many, many, many years. And also has been an integral part of our Airport Commission. And I'm talking about Dr. Payne Hardison. Dr. Hardison has served on the Airport Commission for 19 years and has overseen explosive growth in our airport, not only in runway extensions, but in hangar renovations, in really seeing it come into the area that it's coming now. And so Chad, I want to start with you. I think you have some people, you also think of the Airport Commission, several people from the Airport Commission's here, and so we'll turn it over to you and then have a proclamation we want to read for Dr. Hardison.
Joining us tonight is our new Chair, Steve Waldron, and the Vice Chair, George Huddleston. And a new member to our Airport Commission is Bush Jones.
Thank you guys for your hard work. And I know you have a great Commission and actually got to go to the meeting the other night, and they're working hard, especially on the new terminal project for the airport. It's my pleasure to present to Dr. Hardison a proclamation. Whereas Dr. Payne Hardison has served on the Airport Commission since March 20th, 1997, in his 19 years of service on the Airport Commission, the airport was awarded the 2007 Tennessee Airport of the Year. And whereas he was involved in helping construction 70, 7T Hangar and Corporate Box Hangar units, renovated hangars 2 and 3, completed the runway extension installing an all-new LED airfield lighting system, four new runway taxi connectors, expanded the main ramp, completed airfield pavement repair projects, completed two airport layout plan updates, updated airport rules, regulations, and minimum standards. And whereas he represented the Murfreesboro Airport and the community answering questions and concerns regarding runway, the runway extension project, and the future development plans associated with the latest update of the airport layout plan. He offered many young people their first airplane rides, which helped start their interest in aviation, was always an advocate for our city and Murfreesboro Municipal Airport. Now, therefore, I Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim February 11th, 2016, as a day to honor Dr. Payne Hardison, and urge all the community to join as we extend our congratulations. Dr. Hardison, we also have something for you that Chad has put together. So we've got an aerial of the airport, and then all the City Council members and your Airport Commission have signed that for you to thank you for your time that you've put in on the airport.
Well, thank you very much.
Chad, can you say a few words?
I'd like to take this moment to thank Dr. Hardison for all his years of service at the airport. We are truly blessed in this community to have Dr. Hardison and the other members of the Airport Commission, who through the years have always been providing such a great service, never for their own personal gain, but always for the improvement of our airport, and always in the mind of our community, and how we can always make it better. So I've been very blessed as the airport manager to work under these wonderful women and gentlemen to always provide that service through all these years, and especially Dr. Hardison, who's always been a great advocate for the airport and for all that are out there. So I thank them very much.
And Dr. Hardison has his better half, Ms. Hardison, here tonight. And I know that there's been many nights that he's been at long airport meetings that we appreciate you sharing him with us. And they, I know, are proud, not only proud parents, but get to see them frequently at basketball games, they're proud grandparents, and have quite the athletes with their grandkids. So thank you for what y'all have done for us. The last ceremonial item we have is, I think it was Ms. Moody's birthday yesterday. Happy birthday, Ms. Moody.
Happy birthday.
No, we're going to stop it right there. Vice Mayor Young, I call you out of order.
Some people don't need a microphone.
No singing in this canton. All right, we'll move into the consent agenda. You've got four different items in front of you. Thank you, Dr. Hardison.
There's no comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
I wrote that wrong.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Oh, so many jokes going through my head right now.
I'll pay one day.
She's sitting there, and what's going through her mind right now is, I can't wait till he makes fun of me later on somewhere.
Yeah, it'll happen.
We'll move into new business. In pursuant to Resolution 16R PH01 adopted by the City Council on January 4th, 2016, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning for approximately 2.2 acres located along Gresham Lane to be rezoned from single-family residential 15RS 15 District to residential multifamily 16RM 16 District 2015-429. Alcorn Properties is the applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in the January 25th, 2016 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green?
Thank you, Mayor, and Council members. First public hearing the Planning Commission is bringing to you tonight is for you to consider a zoning change request for two separate parcels of property located adjacent to each other along Gresham Lane. You can see them identified in orange on the map before you. You can see that these properties are in orange, and they are currently zoned single-family residential district. Their request is to change that zone to RM16, and that's multifamily residential district, which would permit a density of 16 dwelling units per acre on the property. This map also shows you the surrounding zoning. You can see that to the north is area zone PCD, that's Planned Commercial District, and it's actually the location of property owned by the Rutherford County, where there are several institutional uses there, including Farmer's Market and a Humane Society. To the east, you can see it's zoned RM16, currently zoned RM16, and that property is, has a site plan approved for it for some multifamily apartments, and it was owned by the Caffey family. These two parcels are also owned by members of Caffey family, and they're looking at selling their property to Mr. David Alcorn, who is present this evening, so that he may develop it. Parcel to the north initially was included in this study, and that's another member of the Caffey property who expressed his desire to Planning Commission to not be zoned RM16, but to remain his single-family residential zone. So the maps were changed from what the Planning Commission considered to remove that parcel located directly north of these two parcels from the study. So what you see before you is only for the two requested areas. And across Gresham Lane, you see Miranda Drive and Braxton Bragg Drive, and those are developed county's single-family subdivisions. The subject property, as I mentioned,'s request is to be zoned multifamily residential district. It was annexed in 1996 and came in with an interim zoning classification of RS15 because there was no companion zoning change application. If it were to be rezoned to RM16, the amount of acres would permit approximately 32 dwelling units on the property, that's 16 dwelling units per acre. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing at that meeting. One Planning Commission member abstained from voting. All the other members do recommend to you that unanimously approve this, or they unanimously recommend to you that you approve this zoning change request. If you have any questions, we have members of the applicant here this evening, as well
All right, thank you, Ms. Green. All right, we're going to open the public hearing. Before we open the public hearing, our public hearing rules, if you're representing a group, you can speak for five minutes. If you're representing just yourself, it's three minutes. If you'll address all questions and comments to the City Council, we will, when we close the public hearing, get answers to your questions at the end of the public hearing. And if you will, when you come up, state your name and address. I'll open this public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Will consider for passage on first reading ordinance 16OZ01 to rezone an area located along Gresham Lane to residential multifamily RM16 District 2015-429.
Move for passage on first reading.
Second. Okay, motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 16R PH02 adopted by the City Council on January 14th, 2016, conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning for approximately 1.68 acres located along residential, excuse me, along Dill Lane to be rezoned from single-family residential 15RS 15 District to residential multifamily 12RM 12 District 2015-432. Randy Freed-Sam, applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in the January 25th, 2016 of an issue of a local newspaper.
Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is for you to consider a zoning change request for approximately 1.7 acres that's located along Dill Lane, and you can locate, see that's located just north of Harrell Court. Harrell Court is a private street that serves three parcels, one of which is the subject area. The subject area is identified in blue on the map that you have before you, and you can see it has frontage on Dill Lane and is very close to John Bragg Highway. The property is located also, is also located south of East Main Street and just north of Mercury Boulevard, I call it John Bragg Highway, but isn't quite turned to John Bragg yet. The property itself is zoned RS15, that's single-family residential district, and does have one mobile home located upon it. However, the rest of the property is undeveloped. You can see the property contiguous with this parcel. To the west is zoned RM12, that's multifamily residential district, and permits a density of 12 dwelling units per acre. This property is also requesting a zoning classification of RM12, so from RS15, single-family residential district, to RM12, multifamily residential district. The property adjacent to this parcel to the west is zoned for residential purposes. However, it's the location of a automotive repair business. The property to the north is zone PCD, and that's a planned commercial district for an automotive repair business. Further to the north, you can see there's single-family residential zone and multifamily residential zone. And just further to the north, where you see the CL District is the location of the Senn Federal Credit Union, future location of the Senn Federal Credit Union, which plans have been approved for in construction. If it has not commenced, will commence shortly. Across Dill Lane are some properties zoned single-family residential purposes. And you can see, of course, Mercury Boulevard runs to the south of the property. The applicant's requesting a multifamily residential district in hopes to develop this with a small apartment complex. The RM12 District is adjacent to this property, so they believe that that was a good request. There is a TBA tower just to the south, so the TBA tower is located between this property and Mercury Boulevard. So if you see the words Harrell Court on the map, that's where the TBA tower is located. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing to consider this request to change the single-family zoning to multifamily zoning, and their recommendation to you is that you approve this request, and their recommendation is unanimous. If you have any questions, we have members of staff available to answer them, and also
Any questions for Ms. Green? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Will consider for passage on first reading ordinance 16OZ02 to rezone an area located along Dill Lane to residential multifamily 12RM 12 District 2015-432. Move for passage? Second. Ms. Wright, motion is second.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Move to item four. Pursuant to Resolution 16R PH03 adopted by the City Council on January 14th, 2016, will conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning for approximately 8.56 acres located along Franklin Road to be rezoned from single-family residential 15RS 15 District to commercial fringe CF District 2015-433. Anthony Togri, applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in the January 25th, 2016 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. This next and final public hearing that we're bringing to you this evening is for you to consider a zoning change request for property that's shaded orange on the map before you. And you can see, it's actually a smaller portion of a larger property located south of Highway 96, which is also known as Old Fort Parkway, and also known as Franklin Road. Matter of fact, I believe in this section, it is now referred to as Franklin Road. It also has frontage along Rucker Lane that you can see along its eastern property line. So to the north is Franklin Road, and to the east is Rucker Lane. This is a larger parcel, as I mentioned, and it's currently owned by a church, which is the River Oaks Community Church. They have submitted development plans to develop a portion of this property with a church, and they have reserved an area closest to the highway to sell, to be developed. They have no interest or purpose in keeping that property, so they're looking at selling it. And that part of the property which they wish to subdivide off and sell is the part of this property for which a zoning change request is being made. The church, you can see the parcel that surrounds it is sort of an odd-shaped parcel, and they're going to use all that property, and the church itself will act as a buffer between the proposed CF District and the existing single-family county subdivisions to the south and to the east. The church also has access to Franklin Road, and that runs along the western side of this orange parcel, if you're looking at the orange parcel. If you go across Rucker Lane, you can see the property's own PUD, and that's for the Victory Village Development. A part of the Victory Village Development is the Public Shopping Center, so you may be familiar with that. To the north, at the intersection of Battalion and Fortress and Highway 96 is even more of the Victory Station Development, and that's a commercial development. Directly on the corner is a gas station. Across Highway 96 from this property are parcels zoned RS15, that's single-family residential district, with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. They're largely undeveloped. At this time, there are no development plans for this property, but staff expects that sometime in the future, the owners of these parcels will come before you for a zoning change request to allow the property to develop with another use besides single-family residential districts. I have had some inquiries from people interested in purchasing this property, or even the property owners, and so that's why I'm alluding to the fact that in the future, there's going to be requests before you. I don't know what that is, but certainly, single-family lots will not be the thing that you would see across the street. The applicant is Anthony Togri, who is an orthodontist in our community, and he has a contract to purchase this portion of the property, and he's requested a commercial fringe zoning. This is a highway, and typically, we would expect to see commercial highway zoning requests along major arterials, and that this is a major arterial. He pulled his request back to commercial fringe because the commercial fringe zone would allow the type of development that he hopes to pursue, which would allow medical office or dentist office on the portion of the property. But it excludes some of those other uses that are permitted in this CH District. So although CH may be an appropriate request here, he wanted to pull that zoning back to the CF, which is the type of commercial zone that we see on the fringes, because it would allow him to develop his plans, maybe give you some more comfort with what he's wanting to do with this property. The property is a part of the general development plan for the Blackman community, and that plan, I can turn to that on the screen here. If you're familiar with the plan, or if you can see the area that says requested area, you can see that it recommends that this develop as a low-density residential, which is intended to permit single-family residential neighborhoods with a density range of 1 to 4 dwelling units per acre. The plan is not consistent with a single-family zoning. However, the Blackman Plan does also recommend nodal, and that's their term, a nodal commercial development pattern centered on major street intersections. With respect to the intersection of Franklin Road and Rucker Lane, the future land use map recommends commercial uses at the northeast and southeast corners of the intersection, but not at the northwest and southwest corners. The plan describes the commercial designation as general retail, restaurants, and personal services for local residents, which appropriate zoning districts could be CL, CH, or CF. The applicant contends that the low-density residential uses are no longer appropriate for this property, and staff believes that that's the case as well. With the property being at the intersection of Franklin Road and Rucker Lane, and with it being cut off from the adjacent single-family uses by the church, he feels, and staff also feels, that there is very little utility for single-family residential lots, and that this may be more appropriate for a commercial development. Mr. Matt Taylor is here, and available for questions, if you have any. Of course, staff's available for questions as well. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing in that evening. They unanimously recommended to you that you approve this zoning change request.
Would a dentist office, would it fall under a commercial local zoning as well, or does it have to be commercial fringe to be able to get this what he's looking to do?
It's, it would be commercial fringe. It would also fall under, we have an OG zone that I think it might fall under as well. The commercial local zone is really a holdover from our old zoning ordinance. It's this zoning district that we created that kind of allowed some of the uses in the old zoning, like 1983 zoning, and so you'll see in older parts of our area. It's old because we have newer zoning ordinance. I was born before then, so no, it's not. The commercial local zone allows residential and commercial uses, but it allows single-family, two-family, three-family, and four-family residential in addition to commercial uses. And I know that the community sometimes feels uncomfortable with zoning that, because then you can build duplexes or quads in an area when maybe you intend on developing something commercially. It, from studying the various zoning districts in my career here, I think that that one is superfluous. It's something that we really don't need, a CL zone.
Yeah, okay.
It's not something we typically, I can't remember last time we've recommended that.
Any questions for Ms. Green? Okay?
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Mayor, Council members, my name is Joe Michota. I live at 137 Cottonwood Drive, which is actually west of this property. Back up to the church property, which is a, if you look at kind of a bottom part of a T going toward the west, that's a big drainage pond back there, was set aside mainly for our subdivision, but now the church is putting water in there, and we've had problems with water backing way up and getting around the duplexes on the Franklin Road. I just wanted to make sure that they look real close at where they dump the water off this parking lot of what they're fixing to put on the corner there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Michota.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Will consider for passage on first reading ordinance 16OZ03 to rezone an area located along Franklin Road to commercial fringe CF District 2015-433. Ms. Green, can we make sure that if this does pass, that that is something that we put in our, the record that we need to see during site plan review to make sure that the drainage is taken care of?
Sure, we can certainly make sure Mrs. Michota puts that in the record. And I do help with the site plan review, so I'll make sure to look at that and point out to our engineering department that it's important. And Mr. Taylor's here, if you want more information about that, of his side.
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Since we don't have any specific development plans, we couldn't present necessarily a defined drainage plan, but in our preliminary conversations with staff and engineering staff on the stormwater, what we've discussed is diverting that water toward 96, which has a much better defined drainage system than the pond Mr. Michota alluded to. So we have already identified that as an issue, and we'll be on the lookout on that whenever site plans would come about, if the zoning's successful. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, this lot would not be able to release, excuse me, any water at a greater rate than it would currently release it today, would it?
Exactly. And that's what we'd look at going toward 96. The larger issue I think Mr. Michota's looking at on the, in the pond he's looking at is it doesn't have a good outfall. The church is expanding that pond, making it larger, but I think that if memory serves me right, it's about as large as it can go right now, so this water would need to go a different direction.
So a good drainage system on this property would actually improve the situation.
It should, yes, sir.
See, they're giving water coming over here now.
I'll use the term that Mr. Young often uses for this corner of the property. That's not exactly where I'd want to build my dream home, I don't think. And because the property is bordered by the church, it is isolated from the residential area in a sense. It is on a main thoroughfare, which is, it makes really good sense for it to be used for this purpose. And if anybody else has any comments, I'll be glad to wait, but otherwise, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve as presented.
Have a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Hey, can I make, I just want to make a comment about, to Ms. Green and Mr. Whitaker about this, just because as I was reading through this, I had missed my opportunity to call you guys yesterday and talk to you about it. But one of the things that I read through that I just want to make sure that we're doing is that kind of, you know, we look at our land use plans, and you know, this doesn't go through the land use plan, kind of the progression of the discussions is, you know, it doesn't really fit in to the land use plan that we put together a few years ago because things kind of aren't like what we planned on around it. And so I guess what I just point out is I want to make sure that we're cognizant and aware of the idea that, you know, we don't want to, if we make one decision that changes the, you know, that goes away from the plan, just because we made that decision that's opposite of the plan, doesn't mean that should continue on to every link, you know, to the pieces of property. I guess what I, I just want, you know, I don't, I think this is the right decision, so I didn't really want to say it beforehand, and I support it, but in this one, you know, I just wanted, it kind of brought up the idea to me that we want to be careful about that, please.
All right, we'll now move into consider recommendations of the principal planner, and we've got to schedule public hearings to consider the annexation plan of services and annexation petition along Northwest Broad Street, amendment to Cedar Retreat PRD, rezoning along Manson Pike, amendment to the Merrimott Springs Mansion Estates PUD, rezoning at 3281 Siegel Road, Academy at Siegel, and zoning PRD and GDO1 at 3726 Manson Pike, Springfield Apartments simultaneous with annexation.
Yes, Mayor and Council members. During its regular meeting on February 3rd, 2016, the Planning Commission conducted public hearings on the matters listed the mayor mentioned. After the public hearings, the Planning Commission discussed the matters and then took action to recommend their approval. The City Council needs to schedule these matters for public hearings. I'd like to mention that the first one is an annexation for the plan of services, and I think, if I'm not wrong, does that take a 30-day notice, according to the new state law? If it's an annexation involving...
Sorry, I can't remember, but if you send it out for 30 days, I'll make sure we're there.
Okay. And the rest of them are just zoning ordinance, zoning map amendments.
The planning commission had a meeting till 11:57.
I heard it had something to do with who the chairman was, though. I heard it had something to do with who the chairman was, though.
I think these, these may be well attended and well discussed. I don't know if we should try to do them all in one night or not.
Let's split them.
Mayor, we were going to suggest March, March 3, is that correct? March 3, okay. With the possible question of the 30-day notice and with the amount of time that's taken, I think I would recommend that we set items B, C, and D. And you want E, too? B, C, D, and E for March 3. And items A and F to, and we should go a day after the 10th, 11th, to? That's today, is that?
Today's the 11th.
Today's the 11th, and we've got a short month, so if there is a 30-day requirement, we need to go one out after, 30-day notice requirement, we need to go one out after that. And I apologize for not knowing whether that's required.
17th.
Okay.
Do you anticipate a meeting on St. Patty's?
You gonna provide refreshments?
Perhaps at my place later.
When is spring break?
Spring break's the next week.
Okay.
So that'll get both of them in March, before spring break.
Yeah, spring break.
Okay, that'll work.
So again, that, excuse me, that would be items B, C, D, and E for March 3, and items A and F for March 17.
I will not be here the 17th, but y'all are welcome to, that's spring break for.
Can I go with?
Doug can sure make them go long if you wanted to cover.
That's right, I can drag them out till.
We could do the 3rd and the 10th, and then take the Plan of Services public hearing to late March. I think the idea was we wanted to separate out the ones that were going to have a good amount of content.
Thirty days, though.
But that's the one public hearing, and we could look for another, another date.
Okay, pull out item A.
Pull out item A.
Okay. That makes sense. So to start over, items B, C, D, and E for March 3. Item F for March 10. And item A to the 17th or after.
You'll have a meeting likely on April, no, April the 7th would be your first Thursday. That's not a spring break week.
How about we say item A on April 7?
4/7.
10/4.
George, did you get all that? I'll make that a motion.
All right, we have a motion is second. Councilman Shacklet is the second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Boy, shall we get, take your items, we're gonna have a long one.
All right, we'll now consider recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Director, and this is Adopt Resolution 16R3 regarding reimbursement of expenditures for the soccer practice facility at Jordan Farm.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the Council. In April of 2015, the City Council approved a contract with Lowes and Associates from, to design, implement, and develop a soccer practice facility at the Jordan Farm. Since that time, they have come up with a concept plan, had public hearings, or public input meeting on the site location, and been to the Board of Zoning and Appeals. And while this was a 2015 capital allocation, we need reimbursement resolution R1603 to continue moving forward.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Next item is a Resolution 16RO4. The city, the city of Murfreesboro has an opportunity to partner with the Chamber of Commerce and also with Tennessee State Soccer to hold one of the largest adult soccer events in the nation, Soccer Fest. They have approached us, and Barbara Wookiee with the Chamber is here to give a little background and a little information on the benefits.
Thank you, Thomas, Mayor, Members of the Council. On behalf of the Chamber and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we want to thank you for all that you do for tourism in the area. It truly takes all of our partners working together to guarantee the success of our many events. The tourism economic impact for one year in Rutherford County is $307 million, and those numbers reflect a $16 million increase over the previous year. And for the first time within Rutherford County's history, area hotels have sold over 1 million room nights within a 12-month period. And hosting this event would generate approximately $2.8 million in 2017 and 2018. And one of their primary requests is that they be granted permission to serve beer in a confined area during the tournament. This is an adult soccer fest, and we are here this evening to ask that you consider that.
We want to assure you that we will follow all policies and procedures that are customary with events such as this that we host at Oakland's or Cannonsburg or other areas. While city staff will always be on hand, we've also encouraged event organizers to hire off-duty police officers to serve security in this controlled area. We'll also require them to have current permits and license in terms of bartenders or who's serving.
Want to ban vuvuzelas, but those are the big horns. But I'll move for approval.
You got a couple leftovers.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Would they be required to get a beer permit to do this? I mean, this is not approving them to sell beer right now without the application process. Is that correct?
All permits and requirements by city code would be their responsibility to acquire.
Okay.
Let me ask a question about, is there additional liability that we're assuming when we grant beer on a public facility, which we normally don't like? Is there additional liability that we're assuming?
This is not something that I have studied, but I don't believe that we would have any additional liability, assuming that we take the appropriate steps to require permits and provide reasonable security, or require that our event producers do that. I don't believe that this would engender any additional liability on the part of the city.
This would be very comparable to any event that we have in a city, say, be it the tennis facility, or the golf course, or anything else where alcohol would be served. I mean, we wouldn't have any additional liability that would be any different from those, would it?
I don't see why it would. I'm sure it would really be the same as any event that we allow to be hosted on city property where alcoholic beverages are allowed, and that's not an uncommon event.
I mean, business after hours or any type of event like that that would, but they still have to attain the beer permitting, just like Ms. Wright referenced.
Of course, usually the business after hours is on someone's private property, but for instance, we have, had, had a beer tent at Jazz Fest. We've had it at a variety of other functions that have been held on city property at Cannonsburg and in other, other venues, and I know we're setting up to be able to do that at the tennis facility. So I can't see that this one would be any different than any of those.
We might take a look at our, you know, what we're asking them to sign, is it an agreement or something, to just make sure we've covered all the bases.
Once we submit a bid, right now, we need this resolution so that Barbara can submit an actual bid, so we can obtain the tournament. And then when we work out a use agreement like we do with all of our tournaments, we'll include those regulations and those policies and those requirements in that use agreement.
I mean, access to children, you know, children, because obviously, it may be an adult event, but children are going to be there, I'm assuming.
Absolutely. But it will be required that they have a controlled area.
Controlled area, right.
Children won't be able to go in where they're actually drinking beer.
Right, yeah.
That's the way you solve that problem.
And Ms. Baker in our office will be reviewing the bids and the contract documents as she does with all of the operations, all the events that we have at Park and Rec.
So did I have a motion?
You did.
Did you have a second? Second.
Where's your second? Ms. Wright, call the rule.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, we'll consider recommendations of the Assistant City Manager, hiring Cumberland Securities to provide financial advisory services on city debt issues.
Mayor and Council, part of my job is to get you all out of the reimbursement resolution business, at least for a while. Tonight, we're coming with a recommendation of employing Cumberland Securities of Knoxville as the city's financial advisory firm. The adopted financial policies that council put in place back in 2010 require the city to have a financial advisor to do debt transactions. We are infrequent in the debt markets at best. None of us are experts at the actual processes that we have to go through to sell debt, either in the public markets or in private placements. And so your all's financial policies say we will employ a financial advisory firm that does this every day, that has experience, to assist us when we have to sell debt. Cumberland, right now, is advising more than half of those top-rated Tennessee cities. If you remember back to budget presentation, we showed you the nine Tennessee cities rated AA+ or better, our bond rating or better. Cumberland already advises more than half of those cities. They have tremendous expertise in their firm. They have been innovative in public finance over time. The people inside Cumberland created the state legislative statutes for the public building authority. They have a competitive variable rate loan program similar to what we have at the TMBF. Very, very long history, 1931 firm, family-owned and independently operated in Knoxville. Be glad to try to answer any more questions about Cumberland. The financial fees are negotiated on a bond sale-by-bond-sale basis. There is no monthly retainer fee or any type of continuing expense. It is strictly transaction-based.
Any questions?
Who is our current financial advisor?
Currently, we use Public Financial Management, PFM, based in Philadelphia, but we're served by their Huntsville, Alabama, office. We decided after our last bond sale, now more than a year ago, to begin to look at financial advisory firms. PFM gave us good advice, but the timeliness and the lack of confidence at times that they expressed in their advice were troubling to us. So we knew of other firms in-state and began looking, and Cumberland rose to the top of that search.
Was Raymond James considered?
Yes, they were.
I'm going to abstain.
All right, do you have a motion?
Some of. Seven.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Abstain.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have two appointments, one of the District Attorney Review Board and one of the Airport Commission. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Looks like we have one beer permit in front of us.
We do. Actually, this looks a little confusing because this is a retail package store location currently that is closed. They do plan to reopen with new owners, but in the meantime, they would like to open with beer. You know, the new law does allow liquor stores to carry beer, but once that happens, we no longer have control of the beer permit. It will be overseen by the ABC in Nashville. But in the meantime, we would, and they want to go ahead and open, so while they're in the application process for opening a retail package store, that's what this application is for, and that's why it says it's a new location. They have met our background requirements, but they do lack pending building codes inspection. So this permit would not be issued until those have been met, if you approve it tonight.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, call the rule.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
No payment of statements?
Not tonight.
Any other business with the staff or City Council? Okay.
7:45.
See you none. We'll stand adjourned.